Don't want to step on your stuff there. This probably wasn't whole lot, more than my little cameras. They moved in a little bit that way. It seemed like they have a little room there. Last meeting, if I backed up, I was hitting somebody. I, maybe they'll move it back. They used to have it somewhere else. Yeah, that doesn't, I guess those people. We're still kind of the same seats before.
Yeah.
I want to shuffle.
I still don't have my name taken yet. I know. She said she's ordered. She doesn't know what question. Well, thank you. But if they just have a five.
We should give you a bigger one.
Hello? Well, good morning, friends. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You could join me in a salute to the Oklahoma flag. I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma, symbols of peace and I hold people. You could just join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please be seated. All right. Jennifer, could you call the roll, please?
Vandehen?
Here.
Dethridge? No Fire?
Here.
Boback?
Here.
Carson?
Here.
Tenny?
Here.
Superintendent Fields?
Here.
Could you confirm that we have a quorum? Thank you very much. Well, good morning, everybody. Just want to thank you all for being, being here today, especially our, our board members. Like to remind everybody that the board members are volunteer, volunteer positions. They give their time to serve the state of Oklahoma. So I want to personally thank you all, and I know everyone here is appreciative of what you do. We have two new board members with us today. Please help me welcome Mr. Wes No Fire. And also Mr. Brian, Brian Boback. Thank you for being, being here. Well, we, we have lots to cover today, and so we're going to get straight to it. We will move through things as efficiently as we possibly can, but recognizing that these are very important items, and we'll give them the discussion they, they deserve. So, let's, uh, discuss our action items. So we have discussion and possible action of the following deregulation, application, statutory waivers, and exemptions for the 25, 26 school year pursuant state statute and Oklahoma administrative code. So flexibility of allocated textbook funds. Discussion possible action of statu-, on statutory waivers, allowing flexibility in the use of state-approved textbook funds pursuant state statute. Board members, did you have any questions or comments about the flexibility of allocated state textbook funds?
Superintendent Fields, I, I just have a general question, and I, and I don't want to belabor the issue, but, you know, clearly, the understanding is there's, the state appropriates and allocates funds for textbooks. Some schools don't feel they need those funds for textbooks. My real question, and maybe we can address this in the budget conversation, is how much money is the state allocating for textbooks? And I, and I hearken back to when I was in school, which I realize was in prehistoric times. But our textbooks, we had to tape the covers back on them. We had to buy, you know, covers to put on them to protect them. We had them for years. And I was, when my kids were in school, I'm like, wow, they all have new textbooks. So it seems like there's a lot of funds used for textbooks, but we're really, I'm not really clear how much. So maybe in the budget conversation, we can discuss how much funds are used for textbooks, how frequently we purchase textbooks. And I've had discussions with superintendents that say every time we approve new standards, that drives new textbooks. So really, the discussion is on, is that an efficient? Are we doing it as efficiently as we could?
Yeah, fair, fair point, and I, I would agree. We can have those conversations in, in the budget meetings. I don't know the answer to how much we have in, in textbooks. So these are, these funds are, haven't been spent on textbooks, but the schools have to agree that they've bought the appropriate textbook. So maybe they are recycling them and, and using them. So those are some questions we can, we can certainly find out. But, but point taken, so thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
I did have a question in regards to SDE's oversight of the reallocation of the money. Is that, who's watching over the money being spent for what it's being asked to be spent on?
Yes, that's a great question. So Dr. Hembry also happens to be over all of the accreditation issues as well. And so she and I had a conversation about that. And we think the, the smartest thing to do is there are already REOs in place that are assigned to every school. And so we think the smartest thing to do is that because there's already an assigned REO, to have that person from her department to sort of serve as a follow-up or, or kind of oversight to ensure us and you all that they're using the money for what they say they are.
Jackie, pardon me, REO?
Our regional accreditation officers. So we have regional accreditation officers for each district, and they're the point of contact on all things related to accreditation.
I noticed the different districts that have applied have put different reasons for what they want to use the money for. So in making the motion, I would probably be most comfortable we, it'd be specific to exactly what they stated and then actually have your REOs be, hold accountability that way. I don't know the best way to do that, but.
So we can do it one of two ways. And if you'll see on the agenda that I provided for you, I put a sample motion, and the language of that sample motion says "use of textbook funds solely for the purposes stated in the request to the Board of Education." That could cover it. Alternatively, it is solely your discretion. If you want to piecemeal it out, you're certainly well within your discretion to do that. We approve X school to use their textbook funds for X thing. It's purely a matter of what you want to do and time, I suppose.
We could actually use that motion, but could we add that the REO would be required to follow up on that and make sure the funds were used for that specific thing?
Yep. Do we have a motion, Mr. Boback?
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we approve the statutory waivers allowing flexibility in the use of the state appropriated textbook funds solely for the purpose stated in the request to the State Board of Education, and that the REOs would be accountable to follow up with the State Board for those funds.
Thank you for that. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote, or, yes, that's right.
Vandehen?
Yes.
No Fire?
Yes.
Boback?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Superintendent Fields?
Yes.
Copies of the agenda with descriptions of each area. Did we get those handed out, too?
Yes.
Okay, great. You're very, you're very welcome. Some of these are a little confusing, so we want to make sure everybody understands. So let's, let's move on to library media specialist certification exemptions. So with discussion and possible action on request for approval for exemption from library media certification requirements pursuant state statute for the 25, 26 school year. Ladies and gentlemen, you've had the information. Did you have any questions or comments regarding?
I just have a comment. This has kind of been my thing that I've attached to, and I am pleased that all seven schools that are on this list, they are actually putting people or have put people in place in those positions that are in the process of actually working toward their certification for library media specialists. So yay for them. One of them is actually just waiting on the test. So, great job to those schools. So if nobody else has any discussion, I can make that motion. I move to approve the exemption request for library media specialist certification requirements for the above-listed districts for the 25, 26 school year. Do I need to say the standard? Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Vandehen?
Yes.
No Fire?
Yes.
Boback?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Superintendent Fields?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Let's move on to library media services waiver. Discussion and possible action on request for library media services exemptions for statute for the 25, 26 school year. Ladies and gentlemen, do you have any questions or comments about library media services waiver?
I do. First of all, I want to thank Jackie for helping us clearly understand the difference between these two. And so my only comment would be, is that we have a group, we have a large amount of them, but the, we have a group that are asking for the waiver for one year, and then we have a group of schools that are asking for it for three years. And so if I was going to make the motion for this, I would actually request that we only do it for one year. You know, I think we're, they're, they're assuming that that same situation is not going to change, and I don't believe they can predict the future. So I would like to, that's what I would, I would suggest that we do, is that we approve them all for one year and not one in three.
Thank you, thank you for that. Any, any additional comments regarding?
Do we have more information on why some request three years and what is allowed for three years?
So we allow them three years because it can take time to find the appropriate people, especially in Oklahoma. And a lot of the ones that are on the three-year plan are usually rural schools that don't have a lot of access to staff. So it cuts down on their paperwork process just to apply for the three-year and get the three-year approved instead of reapplying every year. But that is solely at your guys' discretion on how you would like to move forward.
Well, and then, let me make my understanding, because that kind of confused, muddied the waters a little bit. The library and media services waiver is where they are requesting the waiver due to the fact that they need to lower, they can't meet the expectations of the number of hours that their library is open, their media center is open, not necessarily staff.
Correct.
What made this? Any other thoughts about that? Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me see what the. Yeah, I got it. I am moved to approve the request for a library media services exemption for 25, 26 school year for one year for both sets, one year and three years, they will receive one year.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Vandehen?
Yes.
No Fire?
Yes.
Boback?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Superintendent Fields?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to abbreviated school day for alternative education. Discussion, discussion and possible action on request for approval of deregulation from statute for the 25, 26 school year to allow for an abbreviated school day for alternative education. Okay. Any?
Is there somebody from SD? Well, is somebody going to present on this? Or any information you want to share with us on this?
Do you have any specific questions?
Just the detail around the why.
So in the packet, there's a detail for each district on why they're requesting that. So it's very specific for each different district on why they're requesting the abbreviated.
I'm sorry, let me rephrase it. So the, the department is in agreement with the asks of the districts. Is that correct?
Yes, so they filed a paperwork, and it's at your guys' discretion. So we don't tell them yes or no. It's up to each, up to the board to determine that.
Do we have any concerns about those that have been presented?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you.
Brian, I would say that there are several schools that use an abbreviated calendar for their alternate ed. So they, to accommodate some work issues with students, also for being able to use that extra day for interventions and things like that.
Can you just say real quickly, I, this is my mistake. The administrative code that I wrote on your agenda is not right. But I will fix that, and we're, I promise you that we're doing this according to code. And Mr. Leonard was kind enough to alert me to that.
Okay.
I apologize.
Thank you for that discussion. Anything else?
No, sir, I'll make a motion, though.
Thank you, sir.
I move to approve the request for the deregulation to allow an abbreviated school day for alternative education for the above-listed districts for the 25, 26 school year.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a call for the vote.
Vandehen?
Yes.
No Fire?
Yes.
Boback?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Superintendent Fields?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Seven.
Yeah, we just finished six. We're on seven. Mm-hmm, we're on seven.
Seven. Just want to make sure we're in, we're in order. So we'll, we'll move on here to cooperative agreement for alternative education waiver. We have a discussion and possible action on request for statutory waiver concerning cooperative agreements for alternative education pursuant state code for the 2025, 26 school year. Board members, did you have any questions or comments about this particular item? Okay. Would ask for a motion?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the statutory waiver request for cooperative agreements for alternative education for the above-listed districts for the 25, 26 school year.
May I have a second?
My second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Vandehen?
Yes.
No Fire?
Yes.
Boback?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Superintendent Fields?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're on number nine. Alternative education waiver for K-8 elementary school district. Discussion and possible action on request to waive alternative education requirements for elementary K-8 school districts pursuant state statute citing no current student enrollment in their prospective programs. Do we have any questions about this one, or?
I, what would happen if during the school year if somebody moved in and needed alternative ed?
The district would have to be required to be, meet the needs of that student, and they actually have plans to, in, when they apply. That says what they would do in that case.
Thank you.
So it's part of the waiver?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments? Have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the request to waive alternative education requirements for elementary K through eight school districts for the 2025, 2026 school year pursuant to 70 statute on section 1210, 568F due to no current enrollment for Holly Creek Public Schools, McCurton County, and Maple Public Schools, and Canadian County.
Thank you, Mr. No Fire. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Vandehen?
Yes.
No Fire?
Yes.
Boback?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Superintendent Fields?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item nine, accreditation warnings. Discussion and possible action on issuing accreditation warnings to the following schools pursuant statute. We have some accreditation warnings. You've had the material in front of you. Is there any questions or comments about those particular schools or this item?
I have a comment, and I think I've had all my questions answered, but comment to begin with, I think I can probably speak with several board members here that we do, or I do, since I won't speak for them, have concerns about the validity of this process under the, because of the former leadership. We were aware of some situations in which this particular item or accreditation was used as a tool to harm. And so going into this, I'm just going to have good faith that these were done properly within the procedure of accreditation. And so I'll just make that comment. I know in the future, we're going to have great faith that it's being handled properly. And so going into that, what I would ask, going over these, I had another three o'clock in the morning going over all the details of these. But this is the first time we've seen accreditation. Probably should have seen it in July or August, was my understanding. But I believe that probably the most efficient way to handle this is to group these schools into three different categories and make the motion that way. The first category would just be to give this particular group of schools accreditation with warning as suggested. And I can say those schools, if you want me to do that now, that would be Fletcher, McAllister. There's two that I'm going to talk about that I have on that list, but I want to go into further detail. Gypsy, and Chelsea, Venita, and Wagner. There are two other schools that I would put on that list, but I have some concerns about. One would be Grandview. There are two areas of discrepancy, or because they're getting the warning, or because they over exceeded administration cost. And they also underpaid their teachers below the state minimum, and that bothers me a lot. And so I just wanted to put that comment out there. The other one was, Strait also was underpaying their teachers below the minimum standard. So even though I'll add them to the list, I wanted to put that out there. That is very, that's concerning to me. On the other group would be, there are five, no, sorry, six schools who did not meet the proficiency standards for either math or reading or both. And so my suggestion is, is that we table, and they, from what I can tell, and Jackie, you can answer this if I'm not reading this correctly, is that when the accreditation team met with them, all I saw was that the school district came back and said that we'll have a plan. We'll implement an intervention. But there was nothing specific of what that plan would be, or how they were going to use that data to see if they were being efficient in doing so, and getting off of that inefficient list. So what I would suggest on those six schools is that we table them on the accreditation until they can actually submit a formal plan to the RAO that shows specifically what they're going to do, what intervention they're using, what program they're using, and so that we can actually see the details of that plan so that we know they're going to do what they say they're going to do.
I, thank you, and I think that's a great idea, and I appreciate that. The only thing I was going to say is, for me and for my note take, can you repeat the names of the schools?
I haven't given them to you yet. So that would be, and I have never heard of this town, so I'm probably going to butcher it. It's number one. I'll just say that.
Bakoshi.
Bakoshi, thank you. The next one would be the Cherokee Immersion, Kip in Tulsa, Optima, Peavine, and Western Heights.
So you would move to table those?
I would move to table those until they can submit a formal plan to the REO showing specifically what they're going to do.
It's Carson, so I certainly understand your, your concerns and thoughts about that. It would be my understanding that what you're requesting for number three would be against traditional operating procedures here at, at the State Department versus just saying, we'll submit a plan. You want the specific plan, if I'm understanding correctly. What, what kind of challenges or concerns would we have about that?
So that's actually something that the REOs actually do already. So they, we, all the accreditation letters and warnings, once they're approved, we've already had discussions with the schools about those things. And so they already know that, that they're on this list. And so that is part of the work that they do. So our REOs are there to support them, and then there are other, or other divisions in OSDE that help coordinate those processes. But it is something that they are supposed to do, is submit those plans already. So it's part of our operational processes.
Supposed to and required, I'm thinking, are two different things. From what I read, the reports that we were given from the accreditation office was it just says they'll, they'll, they'll do an intervention. They'll have a plan. So.
Well, I don't see any harm in tabling them. If we have plans, we can certainly just review those next month.
Yeah, if they have already submitted it, that's great. Just get it to us.
Would that be okay?
I think we did a similar thing with the library, a couple of them.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Where we just tabled it, and we said, can we get the plan in?
And then the last group would be a couple of charter schools. And I'm going to let, I think Brian wanted to address that, and so I'll let him address that, and then I'll talk about what I'd like to, what I think we should do.
I actually have a question on, specifically on Insight Charter. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that is, if not the largest, one of the largest alternative schools in the state. Is that correct? It is? Okay. So my question would be, is the, I'm going to get the right words here, but the way in which the, I guess, criteria. in which the, I guess criteria that we're evaluating the schools for their accreditation, is it any different for an alternative school versus a non-alternative? And if not, should it be?
The accreditation is standard. I mean, the alternative ed schools have items that they have to submit extra because of the different areas that they cover, but each school, we hold all the schools to the same standards, depending on what category they fall into. So we have like the public schools and the charter schools. So even as a charter school, they have their own set of accreditation standards that they have to meet.
That's where I'm going, is if a student is at the alternative school, in my mind, that's kind of their last, their last stop, right? Or hope. And therefore, they've obviously had some difficulties in their academics already. So I would challenge us to look at that and say, is there, and I don't know if this is a lawmaker issue, but from what you're saying, if the statute speaks to it, but we evaluate those alternative schools differently, simply because we already know there's a pattern of academic issues for the students that are there. Does that make sense? Versus just saying, you're not meeting the criteria, and therefore, now we're going to put them on a warning.
And I can give an example of that. One of the schools is LeMond, I think it's International something. By law, charter schools are not required to follow the same state statutes as a regular school system. And so the one, the thing that they're being marked down for is that, that they, their pair, a couple of their para-professionals do not have the credentials that would be required of a para in a school, a regular school system. And so we're mark, we're marking them down, giving them a deficiency and a warning for something they're not really even required to do. So that, that concerns me. And they, and I know they make every effort to, even though they're not required, they make every effort to make sure they have certified personnel there, but by law, they don't have to.
So the charter schools are exempt from some state statute, but not all state statutes. So there are still state statutes that they are required to meet. And so it is my understanding that this particular one is one of the state statutes that they are required to meet.
But they don't have to do it for teachers, but they have to do it for paras?
That's my understanding, ma'am.
Interesting.
I had a question. In all these, it talks about the academic achievement indicators, and it looks like in all these schools, the majority is in the failing category, but I don't understand what test these are, whether these are percentages, because none of them, I looked at some of them, they don't add up to exactly 100. And so please, you know, help me understand the academic achievement indicators. And then the second question was, several of these schools have like a history of three straight years, going on four, of accreditation with warning. Is there some kind of limit? And how does the process work? Does it go from warning to probation to something else?
I posed that question, and the answer is that there is not a set standard of how many times they can be warned before they are seen as probation. And so I think Ms. Phelps said that there is legislation to change that, is that my understanding?
No, not quite. We, so in our administrative code, we have already, this is the sort of time of year where we start proposing rules to change what's in administrative code. So that is one of our proposed changes that we've been drafting that will come before this board eventually. So we're aware and we're working to solve the issue.
Because there are, there are a handful of schools that have, you know, have been, had four years of warnings.
Exactly. I think I can get my arms around most of this here. So there's a perception that different schools have different kinds of accreditation standards, and we've learned today that some, some do. Case in point, the paras. So what I think we can point to is, the schools have plenty, plenty of opportunity, and that's been up to the discretion of SDE. Mr. Bobek, to your point, maybe it's time to look at some of those alternative rules to see, you know, what we might be able, be able to do with those. Ms. Carson, I appreciate what you're, how you've grouped those out. I didn't write those down. I think that makes sense. I would just ask the rest of the board, any thoughts about, about what she's brought to mind here?
That last group would be, we didn't talk about that, would be the, that, those two charters. And if they are required by statutes for the para, which makes no sense to me that their teacher doesn't have to be certified, the para does. Okay. Then I was going to suggest we don't give them the warning. But if it is statute and it is law, then I'm not sure how we handle that. But the other one would be the Insight Charter, Charter Virtual School. They have, they disagreed with the outcome of the accreditation, and I believe hired an outside investigation team to come in and look at all of the accreditation standards, and specifically the ones that were, that they were deemed on. And this particular, and I think I have that, do I have that? Sorry. I have my every report here, so give me just a second. Here we go. Sorry. They hired the, because what they were deemed on was having, that they weren't meeting the criteria for alternate ed for student intake. And so they hired the National Drop-Up Prevention Center to do an independent accreditation, and they reviewed the same things that the REO, the accreditation team would have looked at, and put it through the same rubric. Across all criteria, offering a positive and encouraging picture of the progress being made there.
I, first, let me say, I do hear you. And I was aware that Insight had had their own team come out to, sort of do their own evaluation. There's a couple of things that I want to say, which, the first one is, is I want to caution us in this room to be careful about that, because essentially, what we kind of end up with is one or two board members having information that is not what all of the other board members have.
I think we all got it.
Right. And even that being said, I think, I think the, what we need to understand here is that there is an appeal process. And so I know that I personally have a meeting set up with the team from Insight for next week. And so to discuss some of these things. The only thing that I would, I would caution us as a group and as a team in here moving forward is that, in my opinion, in my legal opinion, that information would have been more appropriate to be presented in the appellate stage, as opposed to before the warning was ever issued, if that makes sense. And so, and I absolutely understand and I respect that, you know, your constituents want to reach out, and that is your job and your role, but I do want to be careful about sort of jumping the gun, right? In that, in that being said, so Insight will have its proverbial day in court, right? We will hear them, and we will all come to the table, and I'll be in on those meetings, as will the accreditation team and their team. That being said, it's still solely up to the discretion of this board, what you want to do with it. But I do want to give you guys confidence that we do have, if any school, not just Insight, takes issue with whether or not they're going to get a warning, there is a process for them to appeal that. And I would just like to make sure that, you know, we can kind of come to an understanding and an agreement that that process, we need to maybe follow it just, just in case if something else were to come up, if that makes sense. So I make no recommendation as to what the board should do, but just to give you that information.
What you're saying is that Insight, the letter was not necessarily following the process, they should have gone through the appeal process?
Yes.
Okay. And also, still back to my question about the test, somebody can explain that? Or just what they mean, what test they are, and what basic, below basic, and all that means?
I don't have that information for me, but I can definitely get it to you, sir. Sorry.
Thank you.
If, ma'am, I can make a suggestion. We can, if you want that information before you make your decision, we can sort of maybe temporarily table, and like we, remember, as we recall, I think we did that before, and we kind of came back to it at the end of the meeting, just a suggestion, and then superintendent, of course, whatever you want to do on that.
Well, I guess I would like to ask, on all sixteen of these, is there any essence to get this done? Or, I mean, if we table this with questions, can we readdress this? Is anything going to happen if we don't vote on these sixteen today?
No, there's not, it's only for our records and to help get the schools going. Our accreditation team is moving into the next accreditation cycle already, that opened on October 1. So it's just, it's just taking the findings from last year. So if you guys need clarification about anything, or you want more information, we can table it, and it's just, it's for records.
I will, Mr. Van Deenh, we're kind of in a unique situation this time too, because we have another meeting. I mean, so we could even table it to the regular meeting, if you all want to.
Yeah. Well, I guess I have one other question, because at this point, I think I'm leaning towards tabling it. But in all of the write-ups, most of them talked about the accreditation team meeting with the superintendent, and I think most referenced the school board president. Do we know, has the school board addressed this in a local school board meeting, or are these just private conversations?
So those conversations are just with the accreditation team and superintendent and the board president. If the board takes, the board president takes it back to that, their board, that's at their discretion, we don't follow up with them on that. And all of these meetings happened at the end of August and September, so a lot of those boards just probably had their most recent board meeting since our team has met with them.
Right. And I appreciate the timing of that. Some of these schools, though, have three, four, and I think one has five, and there's no reference that the local school board has taken any action on any of these. And so I just wonder if we're really forcing the local school boards to manage their schools. So I think I would, I would like to understand, has, on each of these particularly, that it's not the first time. What actions have the local school boards taken to ensure the corrective actions are happening?
There is a summary on each of those, but it's very brief and not specific.
Right. Right, I can't, I can't conclude.
I like the plan for improving their, not being proficient.
And I guess the one last comment is, on, particularly on the charter schools, charter schools are set up sort of outside the public school system and are special in many ways. But why any charter school would have deficiencies is troubling to me, because we set them up specially to address specific things. And if they're deficient, I think the, we should look to the charter school board to address those deficiencies. So that's.
May I make a suggestion? And just me making a suggestion. I, I would suggest that maybe we do table it, and then Jennifer's team can give a little bit more of a detailed summary for each school. And since we do have the, the regular meeting on the 23rd, maybe we can just revisit this conversation then.
Can I, before we move on, and I'm sorry we got parked on this window, but is Western Heights the only one that's actually moving up? Okay. So I'm going to suggest we pull them out and go ahead and approve them today, because I want to applaud that district. They've been on probation windows since '22, '23, and this is the first time they're moving up.
And they have a new superintendent, and that could be a possibility.
And by the way, I applaud their leadership for what they've done. And so I'd like to split them out. I want to make a motion to approve them today.
Okay.
Great, great.
I'm good with that.
Okay, I.
Mm-hmm, except Western Heights.
B, to table all the schools except for Western Heights, if someone would like to make that motion.
I make a motion that we table 15 of the 16 schools in regard to accreditation warnings, except for Western Heights, and we approve their move.
Is that two votes or one vote?
Oh, two different ones? Okay.
Was that, was that motion clear enough? I'll second.
Thank you, thank you. We have a motion and a second.
We're approving Western Heights.
Yes.
We are, we're pulling them out.
Everybody else is tabled.
Okay, so got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing now, let's call for the vote.
Van Deenh?
Yes.
No fire?
Yes.
Bobek?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Superintendent Fields?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10, Legal Services, State Board of Education, discussion and possible action to convene into executive session pursuant state code for the purpose of state statute, for the purposes of discussing possible action on the items listed in the agenda. Do we have a motion to convene an executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Van Deenh?
Yes.
No fire?
Yes.
Bobek?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Superintendent Fields?
Yes.
We're in executive session.
May I just address the group? Again, thank you all for being, being here. Our executive session, we will spend as much time as, as we need to make thoughtful decisions about those things in executive session. So I value all of your time, as we value our own time. As we, as we move through things, we will plan to give a fifteen, that be okay, 15-minute kind of notification before we come back into executive session, so everybody has time to reconvene back in here, if you are so inclined to be here for that, that final part of the meeting. Anything else? Is that, is that necessary? Okay, we're in executive session. Thanks, everybody.
We will be, you're welcome to stay in this room. We'll be, we'll be moving to another room. Make yourselves comfortable.